Hey Bernie.
It is six o'clock and we will begin. I've got some stuff I, I need to do here before we actually start the meeting. Uh, welcome. This is the, uh, special meeting of, for truth and taxation. Let my clock ring here first. Okay. It's the, uh, special meeting of truth and taxation. December 3rd, 6:00 PM. This meeting will be in person via WebEx or video conference and, uh, stream live on the internet. Not more than two county commissioners will be present in the meeting room. The public may join the meeting via WebEx in person at the meeting room or watch the livestream. If joining the meeting in person, the total number of persons, including commissioners cannot exceed 10, and social distancing of at least six feet will be in effect. The governor of the state of Minnesota has issued executive order 20 dash 01, declaring a peacetime emergency and coordinating Minnesota's strategy to protect Minnesota's from COVID-19. On March 24th, 2020, the Pine County Board of Commissioners declared a local emergency for Pine County. Based on these conditions, the Chair of the Pine County Board of Commissioners has determined that the requirements of the Minnesota Statute 13D dot 021 subdivision 1 have been met, and it is not practical or prudent for all members of the county board to meet in person. The public is invited to join the meeting in person or remotely by phone, uh, 6512155226. Or, and the access code is 1754512970. And you can go to the Pine County website if you missed all of that and find the information if you need to call in. Okay, we will call the meeting to order and we will, uh, rise for the pledge. States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The board has an agenda before them. There are no other additions or corrections to that agenda. I'll look for a motion to approve.
Make our move.
Thank you, John. Who seconded?
More.
More seconds. Any discussion? If not, the clerk will call the roll.
District four, Commissioner McRae.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Ludwig.
Aye.
District one, Chair Holland.
Yes.
District two, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Havy.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Welcome, everybody, to this meeting. This is the truth and taxation meeting, and this is the meeting where we go over the county budget, which determines how much that we, uh, have determined we need to levy. If you're here because your valuation is too high, we, if you're in person, we do have a couple of staff members off to the side. Or if somebody could help me, I believe, uh, they could also take a phone call, but this is not the meeting that you, um, complain about the valuation on your property. That meeting is in the spring. This, this is our budget meeting. So, how, how it's gonna work is we're gonna get a presentation of the budget by our administrator, David Minke, and then we will, um, open it up to anybody who has questions. So, David, you're on.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the board, and, uh, citizens and residents who are present online or in the meeting room. Uh, my name is Dave Minke. I'm the county administrator. Uh, tonight, uh, I'm gonna start by reviewing the accomplishments of the 2021 budget. And we are structurally balanced for all the funds, which means that the projected revenues and planned use of reserves is as much or greater than the planned expenditures. The revenue estimates are realistic, uh, the service levels are maintained, and we have continued with, uh, some dedicated funds. A couple of unique parts of the 2021 budget is we had the use of some 2020 bond refunding proceeds that are dedicated to some projects. And then we also have CARES Act funds from 2020 that we're able to roll forward into 2021. Uh, we do have 10 funds that we budget for, and you'll see these 10 funds show up on other charts as we go through presentation. The top three, the general fund, health and human services, and highway, is where the bulk of county services and activities are provided. Looking by fund, uh, revenues and expenditures, you can see that there are two funds, the general fund and the health and human services fund, that are projected to operate at a deficit. There's planned use of reserves for those funds. And then all of the other funds are either balanced at zero or show a surplus. This is that same list of funds, but it compares 2020 to 2021 so that you can see, uh, where the increases and decreases are. Uh, in the general fund, which accounts for most of the county, uh, activity, such as public safety and general county services, uh, it's going up about 3.4%. Health and human services is going down a little bit, about six tenths of a percent. The highway fund is going up significantly at 17.6%. Most of that is all municipal state aid funds for road and highway projects. The levy on highway is only going up $50,000. And if you look down at the bottom, you'll see that the election equipment fund looks like it's going down significantly. The levy for that is staying consistent, but the money is going into the reserves for future elections rather than being spent next year. And I know Chair Holland, that had been a, a piece, uh, a priority for you for many years, and so we have, uh, got that implemented in this budget. Looking at the county-wide spending, it really can break down into about four pieces. About a quarter of it is highway, about a quarter of it is health and human services, about a quarter of it is public safety, and then about a quarter is everything else. And if you look on, on the chart, on the two, uh, quadrants, the general, that are labeled general fund, that's all of the general fund is just split into public safety and non-public safety to show the significant amount of spending that we do on, uh, public safety. And then our largest single, uh, expense is personnel. So almost 53% of all county spending in 2021 is projected to be on personnel. Now, we're drilling down into a little bit of detail on the general fund. So the total, uh, expenditures are going up 3.4%. We do not have any budget for contingency this year, and we are planning to spend $157,000 of reserves. The levy funds almost 60% of the general fund, and so about 40% of it is non-levy funded. That's a little higher, uh, than it was last year where the levy was funding 57%. These are the various departments in the general fund. And you can see that the sheriff and the jail are the two most expensive departments, uh, followed by attorney, probation, dispatch. Uh, and so that's where, when public safety is such a significant expense, uh, that's where those funds are being spent. And then you can just look at the chart and see the other, uh, departments. I'm gonna switch to the next slide, which is very similar to this one. It just lists more. But I just want you to note the scale. The smallest number on the left axis is $500,000. And the next chart, highest, is gonna be $350,000. So it's a magnitude of reduction in the scale. And so if you look at the library, that's under $350,000 total expenditure. And so these departments are relatively small compared to the ones that were on the, uh, earlier slide. And then in the general fund, the personnel expenditure is a significantly greater percentage than countywide. Uh, and this is because these operations are very staff-intensive. It includes, uh, the sheriff's department, the jail, all of the row offices, uh, the coroner, assessor, county administration, et cetera. And we've got a few slides that just show a little bit of activity in some of the selected departments in the general fund. And so if you look at the jail, uh, admissions are way down this year, and that's a COVID-induced reduction for the most part. And if you look at the average daily population in the middle of the slide, you can see that we have gone, uh, significantly down, and the average stay has gone up to nearly 15 days versus 12 days. And so that just is really a management strategy to reduce the number of inmates in the jail. But that, of course, drives the cost per inmate per day. So for 2020, we are at $155,000, or excuse me, $155,000. Staffing in the jail, we have 37 full-time, I'm part-time correction officers. Uh, we have one, uh, sentenced-to-serv crew leader and court security. We have one full-time and six part-time staff. The court security staff is currently furloughed until at least February 1st, based on the court operations, uh, shutting down their in-person hearings. Uh, and then there is a vacancy in the jail, uh, currently. The jail capacity is 131 beds. The operational capacity is only 85% of that. Uh, but because of the pandemic, the operational, uh, capacity is really down to about 50 beds to allow for single occupancy. Uh, these are just some numbers for the assessor recorder's office on, uh, some of the work that they've been doing, and you can compare year to year. The numbers are fairly consistent. There's slight, uh, increases and decreases. And then the same with the auditor treasurer. If you look, uh, kind of in the middle of the zoning piece, you'll see the septic compliance inspections. And this is a service that, uh, we have really pushed off to the private sector versus doing it as a county, and so that's why you see that number go from 23 to 2. Onto health and human services. Uh, there's a decrease in health and human services of almost $69,000. There is some planned use of reserves, and the levy portion is almost $4 million, and it represents 34% of the total fund spending. And so you can see that in health and human services, um, most of the money is non-tax levy dollars. There's three major, uh, areas in human services. There's income maintenance, uh, social services, and public health. You see that income maintenance is going up a little. Uh, social services is decreasing, uh, by about $121,000, and public health expenditures are going down a little bit. And if you look at the, the 2021 column and compare that to the levy, you can get a sense for the amount of the levy versus the amount of non-levy that is in each of those areas. Uh, and now there's just some data on, uh, some of the health and human services function, uh, protection reports. And you can see these are down for 2020, uh, and that is a, uh, COVID-related decrease where their, uh, students aren't at school, so there aren't as many reports, uh, as an example. Children's mental health, the same way. So far, uh, the numbers are down, uh, because of COVID. In the highway, you can see where the increase of $1.8 million. The levy, uh, represents 16%. Last year it was 19%. And that change of a, a few percentage points is driven by the increase in municipal aid to do projects, and highway has a $50,000 levy increase in the budget. This is, uh, taking a look at the total property tax. And so if we start at the bottom, you'll see the levy increase proposed is 3%. And then moving up, the levy amount is proposed to be $19,935,014, which is a $580,000 increase. And then if you look at the change column, you can see where the levy, uh, from year to year is changing for each of the funds. And so in the general fund up at the top, it's going up, uh, $656,000. Health and human services is unchanged for 2021. This is the second year in a row that there's been no levy increase for health and human services. Uh, and then I've mentioned the $50,000 increase in the road and bridge. The building fund and the technology equipment fund are both being decreased. And this is, um, response to some of the one-time money that we got through the bond refunding to do some technology, uh, in the jail, and then also, uh, being able to move forward some projects and pay for them with CARES Act money. So that allows us to reduce those funds a little bit for 2021. The fund balances, um, we know we don't, although we budget year to year, we know that financial health, uh, is really a long-term endeavor. And so the fund balances are here. For the general fund, it is, uh, $5.7 million. Of that, $4.4 million is unassigned, and we have a policy that establishes a target fund balance of 20 to 35%. And so we are at 24%. And so, uh, if we went to the 35, to the high end of the policy, to 35%, uh, it would be another $2.1 million that we would need to get into the fund balance. And, uh, health and human services, highway and land management, because those are special revenue funds, all of their fund balance is designated. Uh, but I wanted to call out the McV money because we, uh, know that we have carried that over for several years and use that for the home visiting programs. Uh, and there still is money in there that is being spent. Uh, this chart, again, maybe easier to start at the bottom right, where if you look at the property value in Pine County from 2020 to 2021, the total increase was 6.2%. Uh, and then broken down into those various categories, commercial industrial property value overall actually went down a little bit. Uh, all of the other classes of property have increased, uh, a little bit year over year. To get to your property, your actual property tax, you take your taxable value times the class rate, which for a homestead residential is 1%. And then you get your tax capacity. So in the example, if you had $100,000, uh, value times 1%, you have a $1,000 tax capacity. If you add up all of the tax capacities in Pine County, uh, you come up with that $31.6 million. And then it's arithmetic to divide the $19.9 million by the 31.6, and you get the tax classification, or tax capacity rate of 62.95%. And then if you multiply that by your tax capacity of that $100,000 home, you would get an actual county property tax of $630,000, or excuse me, $630. The tax capacity rate is going down from 65% for 2020 to just under 63% for 2022. And so that's a factor of the levy increasing less than the increase in the values. All right, I guess to, to draw a conclusion there, if your value did not change, your taxes would fall from 2020 to 2021. But from that previous chart, we know that most people's values probably did not, uh, fall, unless it was a commercial property. This is just an example of a property statement, uh, to show how the, the taxes break down, where in this case, the person's county tax went down, but their total tax went up. And just recapping, uh, so all of the funds balance. The board set a goal of a 3% levy or less, and so this budget has a 3% levy in it. And the cost drivers, uh, personnel, wages, and benefits. We have settled contracts with most of our bargaining units for cost of living increases of 1.45% on January 1st and 1.25% on July 1st. Uh, and so that, the original budget that you, uh, may recall that had a, a deficit in it, had those programmed in at 3%. And then also for a, a cost savings, uh, we went from getting our health insurance through the co-operative to, uh, doing self-insurance. And so there's still an increase for insurance, but the increase was less than if we would have stayed with the co-op. And then we have added a new IT staff person and a new HR staff person, uh, which is added to the cost. The county board will consider, uh, the final budget and property tax levy at the regular meeting on December 15th at 10:00 AM. So that, uh, concludes the formal presentation. And I guess I think, well, questions?
Does anybody, thank you very much, David. I always appreciate that, the work you put into that. Questions from anybody?
Mr. Chair, are we just taking public comment, or can I ask a question?
No, you can ask a question. Go ahead, Josh.
Not to put you on the spot, David, but, uh, uh, do you know where our tax rate has gone? It's been lowering the last few years, hasn't it?
Yeah.
It, it has. Um, we're pretty, we're pretty consistently in the 60% range. And I think our region of the state, if you look at our neighbors, we compare favorably. If you look at counties statewide, we probably do compare as well.
What was that?
Public here, Steve.
A question? Go ahead.
Yeah, someone in attendance has a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Might have to come up.
Um, I was just wondering, are you waiting for me?
Yeah, you can come up here if you want.
I was just wondering, um, do you have a?
I can't, I can't hear.
You may, you may have covered this before I came in, but I was just wondering, how, how did you apply the $800,000 that you received from refinancing the bond? And, um, the additional, uh, $785,000 from, uh, the COVID funds? How is that applied toward reducing, um, the, uh, taxes for us this year?
So, Mr. Chair, I can answer that.
Yeah.
So the, the bond proceeds are paying for, uh, the courthouse remodel, the jail camera system, the parking lot, uh, resurfacing up here in Sandstone, and I think there was one other project. I think there were. I'm sorry?
Solid waste buildings.
Yes, thank you, Kelly. The solid waste building. And then the CARES Act funds of almost $800,000 are being used to backfill, uh, some of the public health and public safety salaries, personnel costs that were expended due to the pandemic. And so those will just roll into the fund balance for, uh, the end of 2020. And those can be used to pay for some of the, we have about, um, about $160,000 of, uh, fund balance used planned in the general fund. And so anything not special should just stay in the general fund.
We also use reserves.
Well, the plan, part of that planned reserve is that this, these monies that aren't spent this year roll into the reserve. And so we're, we're able to use two years' worth of that, partially. Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Nicely.
Hi, Mark.
Fourth Avenue, Southwest in Pine City. Uh, just have a general question and then maybe a few comments. Um, for the presentation on the slide, uh, where it talks about increase in property values, does that include new construction?
Yes, those are the total values. And so it, it wraps together increases in existing, uh, construction and new construction.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, if I can just make a few comments.
Yep, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at my proposed property taxes, and I'm in communication. I had quite a, quite an increase in my valuation, just, uh...
Mark, I'm, I'm losing you a little bit here.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm trying here. Um, I'm in communication with the assessor's office and didn't share of my increase as big as my valuation. I really like that. Uh, overall, you know, I, I have a residential homestead property in the city of Pine City. My increase, what I'm having to pay is 18%. $450, $460 increase. Overall, 22.2% of that increase. City and increase of the county is 15.8%. That's a lot. And so I'm just...
So, did you do it? I think you're gonna have to work with the assessor's office because obviously your value must have went way up.
And I'm doing that, Mr. Chairman. Um, but you know, I'm, 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 I've had several people, including in the assessor's office, ultimately, real estate market. If the real estate market's bad, huh? Um, you know, your de, your decrease in the tax rate should have been more than... So, you know, we have a pandemic going on. We have people who own businesses who are now under a second shutdown because of the governor. And people getting laid off. I know of somebody in a simpler situation, they're getting stopped on their property taxes. Two members of their household, one's unemployed in a month, the other's on a salary. So I'm just impoliting you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, before you vote on this budget. You know, please keep the tax rate in mind. Go through that budget line by line. And please try to find some other areas available. Those are my comments.
Thank, thank you, Mark. Any other comments?
One more, Mr. Chair, coming up.
My name's Don Banky, and I'm in Pine Lake Township. And I just, just to note, my, my taxes went up, uh, 23.5%. Um, which would be like, uh... which would be like, it'd be like $2.46 gas tomorrow in proportion, which would be quite, quite a shot. But mine was due to, mine was due to improvement, which I disagree with as far as if you improve your property, it seems like the, the permit is for public safety. But yet it seems like there's really just a path for that permit information to go straight to the assessor, especially since a pole shed is never even inspected for public safety. So we should just call it an assessor's notice rather than a, rather than a permit. And so now, instead of changing my oil in the driveway, I'm gonna pay an extra couple hundred bucks every year in addition to my improvement that will stay in Pine County after I'm gone and will benefit the county and benefit the state. It seems like we should be encouraging that. It would also help the construction trade too. And then let that increase be realized at the sale rather than at the, at the time of improvement, which of course we want our community and our, our county to be improved. Second point I wanted to make, which is this more of a concern, is that the jail, the jail guard prison ratio, the beds were, I think it was 133 at the height, and now we're at 55. You know, so that's a 37 to 55 guard to inmate ratio. I, I wouldn't imagine that that's variable speed if there's actually more guards come on when we get up to, if the jail was full. But I would admit, it, that's just the amount. And I understand that you can't adjust that, it's probably for a different meeting. But I am concerned that as far as that, that budget line, that if Pine County, it wouldn't take much for, for our county to have a problem like other parts of the, other parts of the country have had. And if there's just an encouragement that there would be at least some kind of contingency plan if, if, if that should happen. Steve, you're muted.
Anybody else? Any other comments?
One more.
Yep.
I would like to thank this august body for hearing me tonight. I'm here on a fact-finding mission, being a new taxpayer to the county. Maybe just one question, because you have a lot on your plate. With the economy, a lot of municipalities are losing retail tax income. The question is, in Pine County, is this gonna cause pressure on you to raise the property taxes to make up for any losses in that area? And I'll leave it at that.
Sir, could you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry?
Could you state your name for the record?
Mark Johnson.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Mark Johnson.
And we spoke on the phone yesterday. Dave Minkie.
These masks are great, what?
We spoke on the phone yesterday.
Yes, we did.
So, nice to meet you.
Yeah, I have something for you. I'll give it to you.
All right.
Mark, I, I, I'll take a stab at, at, I think what your question was is, is are we supplementing a drop in sales tax with property tax? And, and the answer is no, because all that sales tax money, except for one half of 1%, goes to the state.
How about retail property taxes you're maybe not getting?
We, we, there again, if you're, if you own a business, the state takes a pretty good share of, it's called the, the state tax. But we, commercial property is, still pays, they pay one and a half percent of value, and, and as a homeowner, you pay 1% of value. So, yeah, they're, they're a big part of, of our tax system.
All right. Well, that was my concern going forward. Thank you for your time tonight.
And Mr. Chair, if I could just add, the, the actual property tax collections, month to month for 2020, have all been greater than 2019. So the sales tax collections have actually been higher in 2020 than they were in 2019. So we have not experienced that yet.
Yeah, I think we, we all thought that would nosedive on us. But we do, we do have a special half percent sales tax that's designated for road projects. If you drive around the county and you see a three-digit road, Pine County 117 or 141, that is a totally paid for by Pine County. And so that's one of the ways we pay for it. And those sales tax collections have been up month to year, every month since the pandemic. So we're happy about that. So people are spending money in places where they have to pay sales tax. I do not know how much of that sales tax money's coming because people are ordering online. But a fair amount, I'm sure.
Mr. Chair, I got a quick comment too.
Yeah.
As, as far as commercial taxes go too, it doesn't affect how much your sales are and/or even if the business is open or.
Right.
You pay a property tax, and, and that's what it is on that, on that piece of property. So I don't know if that's maybe clarifies that up a little bit for them too. So if your business is doing 20% better than last year, you don't pay, you know, it goes off your valuation, not, not your sales, so.
Mr. Chair?
He's muted again.
Steve, you're muted.
Go ahead.
I just wanna make, make a remarks on the person who was talking about the jail. The, the, the capacity of a jail is 130 something, but we can never go to that point. Because there always has to be room for, if something bad would happen over a weekend. So typically the state, the state dictates how the jail operates. So it can operate with 85% capacity, so there's always room in case there's a major thing. So, and we have had discussions about if the population goes down, can we reduce our staffing? And we don't control the staffing as a county. The State Department of Corrections says if you have this many beds, this is how many employees you have to have in that facility. But we're, we're still having that discussion and see, seeing if there's, is there a possible, possibility to make some changes there?
But I wasn't advocating that, that if there was a variable speed, if we had sat thinking that that would be hot, the, you know, for science or whatever, if there was a, an incident that caused, you know, the, you know.
We needed it. Anyway, thank, it's a good, it's a good question.
Any, anybody on the phone wants to say anything?
Mr. Chairman, Mark Nicely again, can I ask another question?
You bet. Go ahead, Mark.
And I apologize if this was covered in the presentation and I missed it. This came up, city truth and taxation last night, nobody really had an answer. Down at the bottom of the statement where it says others.
Yep.
What does that cover? At the bottom of the proposed taxes.
Mr. Chair, this is Kelly Shorter coming out of her treasure. I will take that if that's okay.
Yep.
So in the city of Pine City, so countywide, others line covers the East Central Regional Development Commission, which is a very small portion. I mean, for your property, it's probably like $7. In the city of Pine City, the other portion of that is the Pine City HRA, the Housing Redevelopment Association.
Okay, that, that's what they thought, but they weren't sure. So I don't know if Mayor Pete is on the phone on his call tonight.
Yep, I talked to Matthew at the city today.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? I appreciate the people that have given us comments and feedback and, Mark, keep working on, on your valuation. I don't know, I know my valuation went up significantly. So it's a direct correlation between if your, if your value goes up $47,000, your taxes are gonna go up accordingly. So.
Well, yeah, in the last two years, in my property in Pine City, it went up about $47,000. You're, you're pretty close. With no improvement.
That's what mine, that's what mine went up this year.
Yeah, well, yeah. You have, you have ag land, so you're a different category. Yeah, I'm sure you're paying a lot more than me.
Well, see, the, the nice thing about ag land is you only pay a half of percent of value on, on the ag land. But unfortunately, the cost went up on my house, but that's, that, that happens.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Anybody else? Did all our callers drop off? I'm not, I'm not seeing any, anymore.
It, it does not look like anyone in the room has any other comments they want to add, or?
Just, just for, just for everybody, I know, Mark, you asked a question about, about us looking at every line. And, and we do look at every line. We start looking at, at those lines and, when did we start this year? August? And, and meet many, many times. Department heads meet many times, we send it back to them and say, that's not gonna work. And so we've, we've taken a lot of looks at, at a lot of different lines. One example would be the, the increase that Highway has asked for. And Highway has stepped up to the plate to help us out many, many times. One of the things that they've done is taken over fleet management. And, and when they took over all of fleet management, that means they're buying every vehicle that gets purchased for the county, including squad cars. And when I first got on the board, it was a, it was a easy way to, to balance a budget is just not buy some squad cars one year. Well, you know what happens when you do that? They're still wore out. Now they're double wore out. Now you've got twice as many wore out the next year. So now you've got this seesaw effect. So Mark took over fleet management and says, you know, we're gonna replace X amount of squads every year. And, and so we're, we're on a budget plan. But Mark absorbed that in his highway budget. And so it, it's been a, a great evening out for us, much like we've done with the election costs. You know, what, the election year, our costs were, what, $70,000 to $90,000? And then the next year, they were hardly nothing. And then the next year, they're back up there again. Well, this last year, how many elections did we have, Kelly? Last spring, three? Special elections?
Four.
Four, plus the regular election. So it's a good thing we had some contingency money there, or a start anyway, of some in the, in the bucket to help us. So those are some of the things I, I think we've tried to been, be disciplined about, not putting our heads in the sand and saying, we're not gonna put any money aside to fix a roof or to fix a parking lot or to fix a whatever. Because they're gonna break down and you have to, you have to put a little money aside every year. And it's easy to balance a budget sometimes by saying, well, we're just not gonna do that. But then it, it's not, I've been on the board when we didn't have any money to fix the stuff that needed to be fixed. And I don't want to be there again. We'll get serenaded here again. So no other questions or comments? Does anybody have any other, from the board, have anything else?
Mr. Chair, if I could just add, for anyone who wants a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, it is posted on the county website, on the homepage, in the news and information section, and then also at the meeting section. So if people want to get a copy of it, it's available.
And, and for heaven's sakes, if you have questions on the budget, or if you, for, for gosh sakes, if you have questions with, of your valuation, don't wait until the meet, you know, those people work every day at the assessor's office. Talk to them. They're humans, they have property too, and they, they're, they're, the whole idea is just to be, treat everybody fairly. So work with those people. Appreciate everybody coming. If we see no other business before the board, I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Yep, thanks, Steve.
Thanks guys.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Hey, Dave. I won't cheat you.